All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 6:00 PM and I'd like to call to order the April 24th, 2024 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with your call, please?
Yes, Trustee Dougherty is not in attendance this evening. Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Sledak?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
Thank you. All right, before we proceed with the next item on agenda, I just want to remind everyone, as was noted on the bottom of our agenda, as well as on social media today, we do unfortunately have a hard stop of 6:45. That's when we lose quorum tonight. Thank you to Trustee Humphreys for working his schedule around so that we could have a shortened meeting and get some of the stuff approved and out of the way. So, we do obviously value everyone's public comment, so we're trying to allot as much time to public comment as possible. So, that being said, we'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes.
I will move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the March 20th regular meeting minutes. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, those have been approved. Item number five, financial matters. We've got the March 2024 financial report, as well as the April 2024 invoices.
Yes, we're 25% through the year as of the end of March. As you can see in the revenue report, we are at .8% collected. That is as expected, as 96% of our revenue comes from property taxes, which will be collected in June and September. We are 21.1% on the expenditure side. You will see, again, the insurance other is at 90%. That is, the bulk of our annual premium has been paid for the year, and we only anticipate having the workers' comp audit correction on that for the rest of the year. And in the data processing services, we are at 51% due to the billing cycles of SWAN. So, if anyone has any questions?
Julie, can you, for next month, give us an estimate of how much the FOIA's cost?
Sure.
Thank you.
Under invoices of note, there is, the first line is "All Comp Systems, Alarm System Installation." Can you talk a little bit more about, like, what that specifically was?
We added sensors at the forest and Curtis doors, and at the staff doors, and keypads for an alarm system.
All right.
I will move, then, to approve the financials for redoing March and April, and one, March and April, sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Caitlin, can you proceed with your call?
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sledak?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, the financial matters have been approved as presented. Item number six is trustee comments.
I have something very briefly. I wanted to thank the library staff and the foundation for your kindness and support when my brother died a couple of weeks ago, and particularly wanted to thank Amanda Recubado and Brooks Rule of the Foundation Board for allowing me to put up the memorial fund for my brother on the Foundation page in support of the social work program. I really appreciate all of the empathy, sympathy, and kindness I have received over the last few weeks from all of you. Thank you.
In the interest of time, I will not make any comments because I want to allow for public comments, so that won't be anything.
I would say the same. I'm just going to mention that the issue of discoveries hit the mailboxes this week, and I hope everybody will take a look at the library discovery newsletter. It's pretty wonderful this month.
All right, and I'll go next. I just want to take a moment to speak out and condemn the misogynistic and vile comments directed towards a particular village council member. Such reprehensible behavior has no place in our community. These comments not only target an individual, but also reflect a broader issue of sexism and discrimination that persists in our country. Furthermore, these remarks speak volumes about the antiquated beliefs of certain groups of people who erroneously believe that libraries, and by extension, public spaces, should reflect their narrow views of the world. It is the job of any library trustee to ensure that libraries remain inclusive spaces that cater to the diverse needs and perspectives of all community members. Attempts to impose regressive ideologies upon these institutions undermine their fundamental purpose and threaten the principles of equality and intellectual freedom. Thank you. All right, we are on to public comments. Before I open the floor, I want to review a few things about our public comment portion. The First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution provides protection to and opportunity for free speech in public forums. That being said, the public meeting of a board or council is considered a limited public forum, which means that the board is within its right to regulate the length, time, and place of said free speech. The public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. As a reminder, the meeting tonight will be adjourned at 6:45, and we will try our best to accommodate all that wish to speak. Speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes, and no more than five minutes is the max. If you are representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole group. If a member of the public goes over their time limit, I will motion for a five-minute recess. We will continue with public comment after the recess. If we run into more issues, then I'll put an end to the public comment portion of the meeting. My authority to do this is written within the board bylaws. Please refrain from applauding, heckling, and side conversations. All right, we will go ahead and get started. You can step up to the podium.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark. Obviously, I've seen a lot about, you know, these people who are sick in the head, you know, threatening library board members, people on the council, and I find it absolutely appalling. My kids absolutely love the library. I grew up in the south suburbs, and we had, you know, a couple decent libraries around, but nothing, nothing like the Downers Grove Library. We are at the library at least twice a week. We can pretty much, you know, plan every weekend by clockwork. If they don't have, you know, some kind of practice or something, every single Saturday it's wake up, make breakfast, head on over to the library, and I kid you not, they come home with 30 to 40 books apiece every single time. We have to tell my older one, hey, enough with the graphic novels. You don't need to take out the entire section. And then, of course, it's, oh, Dad, I can't carry this. It's too heavy. But the library in and of itself, you know, when I heard about all this stuff going down, I went to the library and I brought everybody donuts. When the garbage happened a few years ago, I ordered them a bunch of pizzas. You know, the library is a great place, and I don't know what kind of problem people have with it. It makes absolutely no sense to me. You know, anybody with a lick of sanity would understand that what these people are doing is just completely inappropriate. You know, and it's even more so than just, you know, the library itself. We have, and believe me, my kids can be pretty annoying. They will ask question upon question upon question upon question of everybody working at the library, and they have been nothing but super nice. And, you know, in addition to, you know, the people working there, all the displays and stuff like that, generally, when we go to the library, I know we're going to be there at least 45 minutes, just because there's so much they want to see, there's so much they want to do, and I don't understand how anybody in their right mind could have any issues with how the library operates. I think the Downers Grove Public Library is one of the things that is a shining example of, you know, how great Downers Grove can be, and they are, you know, something that is necessary in the community and something that other communities look up to, and quite frankly, are probably jealous that our library is so much bigger than everybody else's. Am I cut off? Oh, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. Take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marge Mark. I'm a 27-year Downers Grove resident and a very longtime library patron. I just want to thank all of you on the board, Dr. Milovic, and all of the great library staff we have here in Downers Grove. Trustees, thanks for choosing to serve on this board and all of the hard work you put into it. I know that it takes a lot of time and effort on your part, and it isn't always easy or pleasant. You are valued, and your service on the board is appreciated by the Downers Grove community. I'm grateful to live and raise my family in Downers Grove, where our large and thriving library, five-star, is such an important part of the community. My kids have always loved coming to the library. The librarians are helpful with book suggestions. There are wonderful study spaces and great programming, like So What and Teen Crafts, just to name a few. We all love the great assortment of diverse programming that is offered: book discussion groups, historical portrayals, craft programs. Just today, I took part in a virtual Yellowstone presentation, and it was phenomenal. So, I just want to thank all of you for your service, and thank you for supporting our great library that we have here in Downers Grove. Thanks.
My name is Norm Sidler. I'm a lifelong resident of Downers Grove, 20-year pension board member at Downers Grove Police, grew up going to library studying, and through undergrad and graduate school, so spent a lot of time there. I just wanted to make two points. One is just to clarify on the levy, that there's been a couple comments that taxes have gone down, and that's really my big concern, right, is the amount of money that we're spending and the projection of where that goes. Just for the facts of where they go, the levy this year was $6.2 million. In 2023, it was $5.9 million. In '22, it was $5.8. In '21, it was $5.6. Over the last 10 years, the increase has amounted to 37.8%. So, when we make a comment that we've lowered the factor, it implies to people that we're lowering taxes. You can lower mathematically the factor, but we're just raising the levy. So, the actual physical levy is what goes to the taxpayers, and something I just want to convey to everyone, that's the biggest concern. Watching where we're spending our money, bringing in people to do consulting reports, pitting Downers North against Downers South areas, it just, it's not right. The only other comment I want to make is just an announcement to everyone. When you do go after individuals, it's not right. Like, I can disagree with everybody on the board. I appreciate what they're doing. Don't go after them. Don't go after Bill Nienberg, that's my brother-in-law, and understand, a police report has been filed. Should a Mark Nelson be in this room, and the guy that has a screen that calls himself Fairmont and YMCA, and has a scene with Jesus Christ in the Last Supper and puts a devil on his head? The police report has been filed. Do not underestimate the extent that people will go through to find that IP address. I will be standing outside afterwards. If Mark Nelson, whoever puts themselves in their place, come meet me afterwards. I'd like to meet you. Issued publicly Saturday, it was a threat to Bill Nienberg, my sister, and my nephews.
Can you speak to us, please?
I'm sorry. As you guys are going through, too, the message to everybody, don't take it to that level, and don't underestimate the levels. There was a threat against Bill. It's been filed with the police. You're going after my sister, my nephews, and don't underestimate what people are going to do to find the IP address. Let the police take care of it. I'll be outside should there be a person named Mark Nelson or portrays himself to be at this meeting. Thank you. Do you want to say something? One second.
Eileen Brainerd, resident. I'd like to start with reminding you what the censure statement of Bill Nienberg says. Downers Grove Public Library, February 28th, 2024, motion for censure of Bill Nienberg, paragraph five. He's violated Act Four, Section E of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees by failing to separate personal opinion from his position as trustee on at least one occasion while identifying himself as a library trustee on social media acts on December 28th, 2023 concerning Illinois' new law on book bans. I hope you're ready to live up to the standards that you have set for being a board member. Now let's start to apply them to each one of you, and let's start with Marty Sledak. She identifies herself on Facebook as a trustee at Downers Grove Public Library. Remember, Mr. Nienberg never identified himself as a Downers Grove trustee. He identified as a library trustee, and he never says from where. He doesn't have his town in his profile. Ms. Sledak writes on April 11, 2024, "I have dug in my heels at the ongoing attempt by white, Christian nationalists to lie about and take over the library. I have fought attempts to roll back resources about real U.S. history and progress for people who don't look or believe like them, because when all you have is fear of your loss of unearned privilege and no empathy, your only recourse is name-calling." Interesting how she name-calls while accusing them of name-calling. This is a perfect example of Saul Alinsky's rule: accuse them of what you're doing. Way to go, Marty. Perfect execution of rules for radicals. She must be censured for failing to separate personal opinion from her position as trustee at at least, on at least one occasion while identifying herself as a Downers Grove Library trustee. That's exactly what you accused Mr. Nienberg of doing. Now, let's apply the standards equally. No favoritism. Marty, you need to be censured. I look forward to hearing your comment.
Hello, my name is Katie Johnson. I'm a Downers Grove resident. I've lived here almost all my life. I moved away after college and lived in the city for a bit, but I've been here for the last 10 years or so, and one of the biggest perks of living here has been this library. I grew up going to this library. I still go to this library frequently, and I simply wanted to say I support this library, I support the staff and admins, I support our director, and I support this board. You know, I also love this library, not just because I love libraries. I love libraries so much, I actually got my master's in library science. But this library also takes care of the whole community. It knows that we are better when everyone is taken care of, and that is seen through the recent partnership with District 58 to make sure that all children have access to a library card, as well as the social work program. And when I say the community supports the library, it's not just individuals like me, it's literally the community. There's businesses and other partnerships that also support what you are doing. So, I just didn't want that to get lost. Thank you, thank you for everything you do. I love the library, and I love what you do. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Steve Wilmes, a resident, over 20-year resident. I'd like to approach the desk and give you guys a copy of what I'm talking from, if I can do that. These are some props for the audience, if you're interested in seeing what I'm talking about, or what they are. Sorry, what they are is basically screen prints from the library site. I think the library's got some definite positives and some definite negatives. The negatives are in how information is handled or portrayed. So, I did a little research, and I looked at two particular books. One of them was How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi. The other was Social Justice Fallacies by Thomas Sowell. For those without the handouts, and you'll see them sent around, what you're going to see is, and these are from the library site, is that the books are, have a different appearance altogether, namely, the lack of a comprehensive topic list or promotion list for the Thomas Sowell book, even though both authors, Kendi and Sowell, discuss broadly issues of race, equity, DEI, and so forth. So, going to the Kendi book, and this does not appear to, it appears in one item for Thomas Sowell, but it says, appears on these lists, there are 13 different lists. I'm just going to hit on four of them. Black authors, nonfiction, that's one. Black authors to know at DGPL, diversity, equity, inclusion, adult, and racial justice. Okay? Those are the four out of the 13 I want to hit on. So, if you're not familiar, I think people know who Kendi is. If you're not familiar with Thomas Sowell, he has a PhD in economics from University of Chicago. He's published over 40 books, and just some of the titles he's published are Race and Culture, Black Education, Miss and Tragedies, next one, Race and Economics, next one, Economics and Politics of Race, Race, Culture, and Equality, Discrimination and Disparities, Charter Schools and Their Enemies, Social Justice Fallacies. That's his most recent book. It's a New York Times bestseller. Here's the book, it's a small book. It's got almost 60 pages of footnotes. It's very well done. I'm going to say better than Kendi's book. So, the problem I'm having is, the obvious question is, why isn't Thomas Sowell included in at least the four lists that I mentioned? He's not included in the black authors list. He's obviously black, and he's an author. He's a fantastic author. Nor in the black authors to know, nor in the diversity, equity, inclusion, adult, or racial justice categories. I'm almost done. I'll probably go over a little bit if I can, not too much. Now, questions for library board members. Do your personal categories of what is included or covered under the diversity umbrella, can I have to go back to stop?
You can just finish the sentence.
Yeah. Contain diversity of thought or worldview, or are only certain worldviews acceptable to you? Or maybe some ideals are unsafe to you? I recall a previous library board meeting in which the board did give a definition of what diversity included. The thing I don't recall is somebody saying diversity of thought, diversity of viewpoint. It seems, and this is not just true of Thomas Sowell, it's true of other black conservative authors, Larry Elder, Ben Carson, and Jason Riley, and others, too. So, this is a real problem. It's got a real bad look to it. Please fix it. Thank you.
Do you have a question for me? No.
My name is Noel Manley, and I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois. At the last board meeting, one of our masked, black-shirt friends referred to me as an Not to be pedantic, but an interloper is one who does not belong. Now, as the only Native person who speaks at these board meetings on a regular basis, I found it surprising that a Native speaking on stolen land would be referred to as an interloper. And not surprisingly, all board members were silent regarding this, regarding the overtones of this remark. But back to the matter at hand. Now that the standard of censure and removal from the Downers Grove Library Board is, if we don't like you, we're going to remove you, a very low bar indeed. So, during the dogpile that passed as board comments on February 28th, 2024, board member Carissa Dougherty openly discussed board member Bill Nienberg's library card, an apparent violation of the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act. She doubled down on March 20th, doing the same thing, along with library director Julie Milovic. To test this new policy, I entered a FOIA on March 29th, 2024, requesting the names of all persons over the age of 18 who hold a library card for the Downers Grove Public Library. And surprisingly, I received a list of 28,031 names of library cardholders. The release of this confidential information, the release of this, pardon me? Okay. The release of this confidential information, the release of this confidential information was unbelievable. After receiving this information, I said to myself, are there other libraries out there doing the same? So, I went and FOIAed the following public libraries: Westmott Public Library, Oberg Public Library, the Hinsdale Public Library, the Indian Prairie Public Library, Naperville in Orland Park, all of whom denied my request, studying the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act. In denying my request, the Hinsdale Library Executive Director Karen Keith noted, "Library registration records are confidential. Registration records include any information a library requires a person to provide in order for that person to be eligible to borrow books and other materials." She went on to say, "The name of library cardholders are confidential." I received similar remarks from the director of the Indian Prairie Library and the Orland Park Library. Not to mention that Orland Park, when pressed, Mr. Andrews advised that their outside counsel is Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins. So, there you have it. It appears that every important library in the area respects the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act by maintaining the confidentiality of library holder names. Thank you.
Ed Brainerd, pretty much a longtime resident of, lifelong resident of Downers Grove. The library is unsafe for our children. Still, Ms. Milovic, at the February 28th library board meeting, you said, "There's not been a drunk person in our children's room." That's from some other library, not ours. However, as you know, I have the incident report, that in fact, the incident did occur, and it occurred in the Downers Grove Library, and this report was sent to me by you. Then, on March 21st, almost a month later, you emailed me, saying, "I'm trying to figure out why the incident to which you refer to in meetings, the drunk in the children's room, does not show up in searches of our database. Can you please send me the incident number and date? That way, I should be able to locate it, understand the reporting problem, and issue an apology." I then sent the date and incident report number to you on March 25th, and of this minute, I have heard nothing back from you. I find this odd, since you constantly brag to the DG residents during these board meetings on how transparent the library is, and all one has to do is go to our wonderful website, and you can find out any and all incidents that have occurred in our library. Yet you can't find an incident that occurred in your library on your own website. A report that you sent to me, where is it? Did you remove it, and then maybe forget you removed it? Or is it, there are no incident reports to be found on your website, and there is no transparency?
Can you please address your comments to the trustees?
I'm still waiting to hear from you, Ms. Milovic. You continue to do nothing about safety in our library for our children, and you now think that with your removal of trustee Nienberg, that you can now relax, and you do nothing about safety, continue to waste our taxpayer dollars, continue to push porn and trans ideology on our children, and you think we're going to go away?
We have a motion for a recess in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll take that as a yes. We'll be back in five minutes.
Well, you think we're going away, Ms. Milovic, but you're not. You've unleashed a whirlwind. You've unleashed a whirlwind.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started again. It's 6:35. I laid out the rules. They're very simple, and they were not followed. And I also laid out what was going to happen if they weren't followed. So you can boo me all you want, but I made it very clear. We're going to go ahead and get started. If we go off the rails again, we're going to end public comments. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Andrew Cupido, Downers Grove resident for about a decade and a library cardholder for just as long. And speaking tonight, good? On behalf, good, of the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation. You may know, we just wrapped our National Library Week celebration, in which we partner with local businesses, bring the community out to raise funds for the library. Very pleased to share that we maintained our level of support from last year, and in fact, half the week, we're new partners. So again, to a previous comment, that the business community, as well as its residents, are coming out in support of the Downers Grove Public Library, and we're very excited. We have several other events coming up this year that we're pleased to announce very shortly. If you're interested, check out the foundation website. But again, thank you very much for your service.
Good evening. I'm Laura Kamidolsky, a longtime Downers Grove resident, and I got this and read it today. I always look forward to that. It's chock full of great stuff, from early childhood to the oldest ages, enrichment. I really support the library and the trustees, the social work program, the new tweens area, all the things you're doing. The student cards are just so great, making that convenient for all DG58 students. I could see today, when I saw the Facebook post about how this meeting would be organized, the Awake Illinois people posting. And, you know, you can see their agenda, you heard it here tonight, anti-trans, anti-gay stuff, where they want to take us back to the, quote, "good old days," and they want to remake the library in that image, in my opinion, so... Well, it does come across that way from my point of view. Thank you very much, friends. To me, it comes across that way. I think to other people who might want to move to Downers Grove, it comes across that way. We're not welcome here. This is a town where this is happening. It happened at the high school. I was, you know, showing up for those meetings when it was happening there. I don't, I want inclusivity, and I understand that's a point of view, but it is a point of view that often harms people in real ways, in my opinion. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, Warner Keentke, Downers Grove resident. And they say a picture is worth a thousand words. Here are my thousand words, so in case people have any kind of issues. During the past year and a half, many of the institutions in our society have been under attack. These attacks have focused on non-white persons and cultures, religious affiliations, women's rights, LGBT rights, and others. Things that were taught in schools and our past have been under attack by attempting to remove books or change history. We have witnessed these attacks in our community. As a result, many of our traditional organizations have been on the defensive. With our library board meeting on March 20, and the village council meeting on April the 16, we are now in a position to take a more proactive stance. I would like to take this opportunity to define some of the issues which need to be addressed. First, we need to make more of a public statement as to what our village and community stands for. We need to work on increasing the recognition of the diversity in our village. We all need to work harder to make the village more accepting of persons and religions that are non-white and non-European. This would include acknowledging our past and making a conscientious effort to address these issues. We should work hard to increase non-white and women participation in all of our institutions and to make our community welcoming. We also need to develop a community-wide response to organizations under attack in our community and state that this is not welcome in our town. Secondly, the library and its board now has the opportunity to clearly state what it represents and what its values are. The library board should work with the village council to make a new member of the board represent the values of the library and the community. Thirdly, the library and other organizations have come under attack during this time for patrons who are homeless and may present an array of social issues. We heard that again tonight. A big deficit is that services to these individuals are centralized in Wheaton, which is not accessible to many of our residents. DuPage Health already has a program in Westmont that delivers limited services. I would recommend that we, as a village, as well as surrounding communities, participate in a needs assessment regarding the services needed by our individuals, and call for an expansion of the services provided out of Westmont. This would include support groups, drop-in programs, intervention programs for youth in our schools, and the like. I have just one more point.
Yep.
Our community should not have a fear that books on the shelves or areas taught in our schools come under attack. It is to be noted that these attacks are only recent. In an offensive mode, we should consider what programs need to be further developed to accurately reflect history and events. We need to include programs focusing on increasing the diversity. Thank you for your time, and I would like to, if you have any kind of support that I could work with, the DuPage County Health Department in some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to note that it is 6:41, so we'll see how far we can get.
Thank you. Gloria Walshrock, resident of Downers Grove. I just want to let you know how very much I support you as a library, the director, the staff, and the board that supports the staff. I was thrilled to see in Discoveries, information about summer reading coming out, and the fact that now you have information and forms for summer reading available in many, many languages other than English, and that just thrilled me. As noted in Discoveries, that's part of the mission and strategic plan, and I just think that's great. So I just wanted you to know that you have much support here in Downers Grove, all of you, and we think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. I grew up in Downers Grove all my life. I remember going to the library as a kid. It was a great place. When I was a kid, the library encouraged diversity of thought, encouraged active debate with people who disagree with you, and intellectual curiosity and honesty in debating your opponents, not just uniformly of opinion. Therefore, I think it was a very underhanded move to vote to censor and remove Bill Nienberg while he was out of town on business, and you knew that. And, you know, we have a right, given in the Constitution, to face our accusers. I know that technically that doesn't, that you don't have to apply that to a meeting, but we, the library, always taught that we should hold our values to a higher standard and to remove somebody while they weren't even here to defend themselves with little to no evidence. And as other people pointed out, hypocritically so, as other members of the board do the same thing, to have one person, oh, it's not okay to say your opinions in your private matter when you mention your title, but not where you're from, but another person says their private opinions with their title and where they're from. Those are contradictory opinions, but ultimately, he should not have been removed while he's not here to support himself. You should bring him back. The library needs to return to having diversity of opinions within its own board. Thank you.
I apologize, we're just not going to be able to get to everyone. I have to respect Trustee Humphrey's time to get to his next thing. I did need to just wrap up two things before we adjourn at 6:45. Number one, you can always contact the public, the Board of Trustees via email or on our website. And also, Director Milovic did an outstanding job providing a lot of information in her library director report. Unfortunately, she's not going to be able to get to that tonight. So I would like to note...
Pardon? Jim Lepat.
Yes. It starts at page 21. There's a lot of information. I think the first item of note addresses something that was talked about this evening. So, that being said, we are going to go ahead and adjourn at 6:44 PM. Thank you.